Good evening, everyone. One announcement, don't forget, Election Day is Tuesday, May 16th, not Saturday. All right, greetings to the constables of the town in the name of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. You are hereby directed to notify and summon the inhabitants of the town of Mashpee who are qualified to vote in the elections to meet at the Mashpee High School on Monday, the first day of May, 2017, at 7:00 PM for the following purposes, to act on the articles contained in the following warrant. This is the special town meeting, Article 1, to see if the town will vote to appropriate and transfer from unexpended amounts previously borrowed by the town to the fire substation project by which are no longer needed to complete the projects for which they are borrowed, the sum of $174,000, to pay costs associated with building and parking lot improvements at the Mashpee Public Safety Complex, or take any other action related there. Two, Mr. Gottlieb.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to appropriate and transfer from unexpended amounts previously borrowed by the town to the fire substation project but which are no longer needed to complete the projects for which they were borrowed, the sum of $174,000, to pay costs associated with building and parking lot improvements at the Mashpee Public Safety Complex.
Do I have a second? Motion made, second. Finance Committee.
We recommend approval.
Finance Committee recommends approval. Any discussion on Article 1? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article 1 as... Motion, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Unanimous. And as always, please, if you want to talk, please go to the microphone. You have to give your name and your street address for the record. Article 2, see if the town will vote to appropriate and transfer the sum of $134,000 from revenue available for appropriation to the snow and ice account, or take any other action related there, too. Mr. Cahaly.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to appropriate and transfer the sum of $134,000 from the reserve available for appropriation to the snow and ice account.
Second. Motion been made, and seconded. Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends approval.
Any discussion on Article 2? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article 2 has moved, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Article 3, see if the town will vote to appropriate and transfer the sum of $74,000 from revenue available for appropriation to the retirement expense account, or take any other action related there, too. Mr. O'Hara.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to appropriate and transfer the sum of $74,000 from revenue available for appropriation to the retirement expense account.
Second. Motion been made, and seconded. Finance Committee.
We recommend approval.
Finance Committee approves. Any discussion on Article 3? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article 3 has moved, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Unanimous. Article 4, see if the town will vote to rescind the authority to issue the following unissued balances of authorized bonds or notes pursuant to the votes adopted under the following articles, to the extent said authority has not been previously exercised, or take any other action related there, too. Ms. Sherman.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to issue the following unissued balances of authorized bonds or notes pursuant to the votes adopted under the following articles, to the extent said authority has not been previously exercised. May 6, 2013, Article 8, the balance of $610,543. Project was Chapter 90, FY 2014. May 5, 2014, Article Number 7, balance $605,199, Chapter 90, FY 2015. Town meeting date, May 4, 2015, Article Number 11, balance $605,455. Project was Chapter 90, FY 2016.
Motion been made, seconded. Finance Committee. Finance Committee recommends approval. Just as a correction, it should be rescind, not to issue. End of motion. Discussion on Article 4. Seeing none. All those in favor of Article 4 has moved, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Article 5, see if the town will vote to appropriate and transfer the sum of $3,953 from revenue available for appropriation to pay previous fiscal year compensation as follows. Scott Halligan, 1079. Francis Bullos, 1013. Teresa Lambert, 900. Carla Newberry, $961, or take any other action related there, too. Mr. Gottlieb.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to appropriate and transfer from the sum of $3,953 from revenue available for appropriation to pay previous fiscal year compensation as follows. Scott Halligan, $1,079. Francis Bullos, $1,013. Teresa Lambert, $900. And Carla Newberry, $961.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion been made, and seconded. Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends approval.
Any discussion on Article 5? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article 5 has moved, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Unanimous. As of this moment, there's 167 voters in the House. Article 6, to see if the town will vote to appropriate and transfer from the septic betterment reserve receipts account, the sum of $5,892, with said funds to be distributed to the Board of Health Salary/Wage Account, or take any other action related there, too. Mr. Cahaly.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to appropriate and transfer from the septic betterment reserve receipts account, the sum of $5,892, with the said funds to be distributed to the Board of Health Salary/Wage Account.
Second. Motion been made, and seconded. Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends approval.
Any discussion on Article 6? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article 6 has moved, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Unanimous. Article 7, see if the town will vote to appropriate and transfer pursuant to the provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter 44B, Section 5, the reserve from the Community Preservation Fund budgeted for appropriation reserve, the following amounts, $4,963, 10% open space slash recreation purposes, $4,093, 10% for historic purposes, and $4,093, 10% for community housing purposes, or take any other action related there, too. Mr. O'Hara.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to appropriate and transfer pursuant to the provisions of Mass General Law, Chapters 448, 44B, Section 5, to reserve from the Community Preservation Fund budgeted for appropriation reserve, the following amounts, $4,963, 10% open space slash recreation purposes, $4,963, 10% for historic purposes, $4,963, 10% for community housing purposes.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion been made, and seconded. Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends approval.
Any discussion on Article 7? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article 7 has moved, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Article 8, see if the town will vote to appropriate and transfer the sum of $15,230 from the Community Preservation Open Space slash Recreation Reserve pursuant to the provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter 44B, Section 5, for the purpose of funding the Mashpee Trail Map Guide and Mashpee National Wildlife Refuge brochure, including necessary costs and expenses related there, too, as recommended by the Community Preservation Committee, or take any other action related there, too. Ms. Sherman.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to appropriate and transfer the sum of $15,230 from the Community Preservation Open Space slash Recreation Reserve pursuant to the provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter 44B, Section 5, for the purpose of funding the Mashpee Trail Map Guide and Mashpee National Wildlife Refuge brochure, including necessary costs and expenses related there, too, as recommended by the Community Preservation Committee.
Second. Motion been made, and seconded. Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends approval.
Any discussion on Article 8? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article 8 has moved, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Unanimous. Article 9, see if the town will vote to appropriate and transfer the sum of $10,130 from the Community Preservation Historic Reserve pursuant to the provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter 44B, Section 5, for the purpose of funding the Mashpee National Wildlife Refuge History booklet, including necessary costs and expenses related there, too, as recommended by the Community Preservation Committee, or take any other action related there, too. Mr. Gottlieb.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to appropriate and transfer the sum of $10,130 from the Community Preservation Historic Reserve pursuant to the provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter 44B, Section 5, for the purpose of funding the Mashpee National Wildlife Refuge History booklet, including necessary costs and expenses related there, too, as recommended by the Community Preservation Committee.
Second. Motion been made, and seconded. Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends approval.
Any discussion on Article 9? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article 9 has moved, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Unanimous. Article 10, see if the town will vote to appropriate and transfer the sum of $20,000 from the Cemetery Reserve Receipt Accounts to the Fiscal Year 2017 Cemetery Operating Expense Account, or take any other action related there, too. Mr. Cahaly.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to appropriate and transfer the sum of $20,000 from the Cemetery Reserve Receipt Account to the FY 217 Cemetery Operating Expense Account.
Second. Motion been made, and seconded. Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends approval.
Any discussion on Article 10? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article 10 has moved, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Article 11, see if the town will vote to appropriate and transfer the sum of $34,000 from the Interest Outside Two and a Half Account to the Principal Outside Two and a Half Account, and further appropriate and transfer $36,000 from the Interest Inside Two and a Half Account to the Principal Inside Two and a Half Account, or take any other action related there, too. Mr. O'Hara.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to appropriate and transfer the sum of $34,000 from the Interest Outside Two and a Half Account to the Principal Outside Two and a Half Account, further appropriation and transfer of $36,000 from the Interest Inside Two and a Half Account to the Principal Inside Two and a Half Account.
Second. Motion been made, and seconded. Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends approval.
Article 11, any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article 11, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Take a motion to adjourn the special town meeting.
I move.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Greetings, in the name of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, you are hereby directed to notify and summon the inhabitants of the town of Mashpee who are qualified to vote in the elections to meet at the Mashpee High School on Monday, the first day of May, 2017, at 7:00 PM, for the following purposes, to act on the articles contained in the following warrant of the annual town meeting. Article 1, see if the town will vote to accept the reports of the town officers, or take any other action related there, too. Ms. Sherman.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to accept the reports of the town officers.
Second. Motion been made, and seconded. Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends approval.
Any discussion on Article 1? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article 1 has moved, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Unanimous. Article 2 is the omnibus budget, which I will read after I get done reading the article. I will read the town manager's recommended amount for those new to town meeting. Just yell out the word "hold," and I will so designate, and we can revisit it at the end. If there's no questions, or you don't want it to be revisited, don't say anything. Article 2, see if the town will vote to fix the salaries of the following elected officers as provided in Chapter 41, Section 108, of the Massachusetts General Law, for the period of July 1, 2017, to June 30, 2018, and further to see if the town will vote to appropriate, raise, and/or transfer the sum of money to the freight of town's expenses for the ensuing fiscal year, according to the following line item budget, with the maximum amount to be appropriated, as shown in the column entitled Fiscal Year 2018 Department Request, see omnibus budget, or take any other action related there, too. All right. Number 1, moderator, salary 200, total 200. Selectment, salary elected, $15,500. Three, salary/wage, $341,530. Expense, $38,500. Legal and engineering consulting, $310,000. Total selectmen, $705,530. Finance Committee, reserve fund, $100,000. Expense, $65,000. Total Finance Committee, $165,000. Town accountant, salary/wage, $235,375. Expense, $2,0790. Total Town accountant, $238,165. No holds so far. Assessors, salary appointed, $3,000. Salary/wage, $247,416. Expense, $7,075. Total assessors, $258,166. Treasurer/collector, salary/wage, $229,503. Expense, $53,700. Debt service, $2,000. Foreclosure, $10,000. Total treasurer/collector, $295,203. Human resources, salary/wage, $292,161. Expense, $86,084. Total, $378,245. IT, information technology, salary/wage, $234,691. Expense, $243,178. Equipment replacement, $27,000. Total, IT, $504,869. GIS, salary/wage, $67,270. Expense, $10,037. Total, $77,307. No holds so far. Town clerk, salary elected, $73,490. Salary/wage, $83,219. Expense, $9,785. Total, Town clerk, $166,494. Elections and registration, salary/wage, $46,847. Expense, $13,000. Total, $59,847. Conservation, salary/wage, $185,257. Expense, $4,062. Haring expense, $500. Total conservation, $190,377. Natural resources, salary/wage, $369,311. Expense, $55,500. Propagation, $50,000. Total natural resources, $474,811. Planning board, expense, $7,765. Total, $7,765. Planning department, salary/wage, $114,524. Hold. I have a hold. Expense, $5,555. Total planning department, $120,079. One hold. Town hall, expense, $274,000. Total town hall, $274,000. Police, salary/wage, $3,423,280. Expense, $347,681. Dispatcher, salary/wage, $463,978. Total police, $4,234,939. Fire, salary/wage, $3,249,207. Expense, $462,093. Building inspector, salary/wage, $304,836. Expense, $17,225. Total, $322,061. Tree warden, expense, $425. Total, $425. School budget, $20,870,383. Total school, $20,870,383. DPW, salary/wage, $2,395,370. Expense, $672,565. Buildings and grounds, $1,209,600. Total DPW, $4,277,535. Snow and ice, expense, $116,570. Total, $116,570. Street lighting, expense, $28,000. Total, $28,000. Transfer station, expense, $846,623. Total, $846,623. Sewer commission, expense, $180. Total, $180. Cemetery, expense, $15,000. Total, $15,000. Health. Why is health after cemetery? Salary appointed, $3,000. Salary wage, $232,495. Expense, $24,500. Total health, $259,500. Counsel and agent, salary/wage, $225,207. Expense, $37,950. Total, counsel and agent, $263,157. Veterans, expense, $105,000. Membership, $35,143. Total veterans, $140,143. Human services, salary/wage, $66,357. Expense, $51,910. Total human services, $118,267. Library, salary/wage, $451,946. Expenses, $178,12. Total library, $629,958. Recreation, salary/wage, $258,625. Expense, $35,057. Total recreation, $294,195. Historical, temporary wage, $8,412. Expense, $1,0375. Total historical, $9,787. Cultural council, expense 90. Total 90. Principal inside two and a half, $1,190,403. Principal outside two and a half, $615,000. Interest inside two and a half, $213,125. Interest outside two and a half, $195,025. Temporary borrow inside two and a half, $30,000. Retirement expense, $2,843,559. Unemployment, $60,000. Medical insurance, $7,715,400. Group insurance, $14,700. Medicare, $450,000. Town insurance, $792,000. Grand total, $54,173,383. Moderator. Mr. Gottlieb.
I move the town vote to fix the salaries of elected officers as specified under the column entitled Town Manager Recommendation, in line 2, Items 2 and 24 of the omnibus budget, as distributed to voters at the town meeting, and further the town's freight expenses for the ensuing fiscal year by appropriation of those amounts shown under the column entitled Town Manager Recommendation, and that to fund said appropriation, the town raise and appropriate $51,333.50, and further appropriate and transfer from the ambulance receipts reserve for appropriation account, $450,000 to line item 42, $50,000 to line item 43, $100,000 to line item 72, and $6,800 to line item 74. Appropriate and transfer from the hotel motel receipts account, $65,000 to line item 79. Appropriate and transfer from the conservation revolving account, $15,000 to line item 29. Appropriate and transfer from the shellfish receipts reserve for appropriation account, $25,000 to line item 34. Appropriate and transfer from the cemetery receipts reserve for appropriation account, $15,000 to line item 55. Appropriate and transfer from the street betterment receipts reserve for appropriation account, $425,000 to line item 72, $101,950 to line item 74. Appropriate and transfer from the septic betterment receipts reserve for appropriation account, $29,196 to line item 72, $23,712 to line item 57, and appropriate and transfer from the Community Preservation Fund, $470,000 to line item 72, $63,675 to line item 74, and appropriate and transfer from revenue available for appropriation, $1,000,000 to line item 79.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends approval.
Okay. Now, we had a hold on line item number 36, planning department salary/wage, which was Approach the microphone, again, for everybody who does that, name and address. Thank you.
Good evening. Rob Hanson, Tenchadwick Court. I have a question, two questions. Why the town manager reduced the budgeted for the town planner by approximately $80,000? And can the selectman or the manager comment on the relative value of a full-time town planner? Thank you.
All right. Well, Mr. Collins.
Yes, thank you for the question. As far as the personnel are concerned in the planning department, I would like the audience to know that actually, we're adding staff to the planning department, and it's right now rare for any department to be adding staff. A part-time administrative assistant is being added to the planning department, and the purpose of the part-time position versus the full-time position was a direct result of the current planner, who I know is here somewhere, I saw him, who's done a tremendous job over the years, is anticipated to be retiring. As a result, we wanted a smooth transition, and he did express to me the possibility of staying on in a part-time capacity during that transition period, which I thought was a good fit. As far as the creation of the position, as a result of it being reorganized back a few years ago, as a result of consultation with town council, we needed to recreate the position, even though it's only going to be part-time. So, I don't know if that answered your question adequately, but essentially, we're adding staff, and previously, we did have an assistant planner funded, but unfortunately, the position itself had been realigned several years ago, so we could not fill it. So I think that's why you're seeing the reduction.
Okay. I'm going to release the hold. Any questions, discussions on the omnibus budget as motions? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article 2 has moved, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, Article 3, I'm going to do the same. This is dealing with capital funding. Article 3, to see if the town will vote to appropriate and transfer the sum of $812,167 from available funds to various department capital accounts, as specified in the chart accompanying this article, or take any other action related there, too. All right, department, police, 10 police vehicles, year one of a three-year lease, Four police vehicles, year three of a three-year lease, $48,000. Total police, $223,000. Fire, purchase one ambulance, $250,000. Total fire, $250,000. DPW, 2016 International Dump Truck, year three of three, $48,722. 2017 F-550 with dump, year two of two, $35,525. Replace the 2004 Kubota tractor, M72799, $55,000. Replace the 2012 John Deere mower, $50,000. Replace a two thousand and twelve John Deere mower, fifty thousand. Replace a two thousand and nine Ford Escape, M-86388, thirty thousand. Total DPW, two thousand, two hundred and nineteen thousand, two forty-seven. IT, info technology, NAS storage at town hall, fifty thousand. Upgrade VMware server slash switch at fire, thirty-five thousand. Total IT, eighty-five thousand. Recreation, a twelve-passenger van, year three of three, nine thousand, nine twenty. Total recreation, nine thousand, nine twenty. School, air conditioning network closets, twenty-five thousand. Total school, twenty-five thousand. Total capital appropriation, eight hundred and twelve thousand, one hundred and sixty-seven. Mr. Cahalan.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to appropriate and transfer from the ambulance receipts reserved for appropriation account, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to the line item three. Appropriate and transfer from the Mashpee Cable and Advanced Technology account, fifty thousand dollars to line item nine. Appropriate and transfer from the Recreation Revolving Fund, nine thousand, nine hundred and twenty dollars to line item eleven. Appropriate and transfer from the revenue available for appropriation, five hundred and two thousand, two hundred and forty-seven, to the remaining various department capital accounts.
Motion made and seconded. Finance committee.
Finance committee recommends approval.
There was no holds on Article Three. How about some discussion? Any discussion on Article Three? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article Three has moved, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? unanimous. Article Four, see if the town will vote to approve the annual regional school district budget for the Cape Cod Regional Technical High School District for the fiscal year beginning July one, two thousand and seventeen, in the amount of fourteen million, seven hundred and thirty-two thousand, and further to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of one million, one hundred and thirty-five thousand, ten dollars, to meet its share of the cost of operation and maintenance of the Cape Cod Regional Technical High School District for the fiscal year beginning July one, two thousand and seventeen, or take any other action related there too. Mr. O'Hara.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to approve the annual regional school district budget for the Cape Cod Regional Technical High School District for the fiscal year beginning July one, two thousand and seventeen, in the amount of fourteen million, seven hundred and thirty-two thousand, and further to see if the town will vote to raise the appropriate the sum of one million, one hundred and thirty-five thousand, ten, and meet, to meet its share of the cost of operation and maintenance of the Cape Cod Regional Technical High School District for the fiscal year beginning July one, two thousand and seventeen.
Motion made and seconded. Finance committee.
Finance committee recommends approval.
Any discussion on Article Four? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article Four has moved, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Approved. Article Five, see if the town will vote to appropriate and transfer from revenue available for appropriation a sum of money to fund the firefighters' union contract, effective July one, two thousand and seventeen, with said funds to be distributed to various salary line items by the town accountant, or take any other action related there too. Ms. Sherman.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to appropriate and transfer from revenue available for appropriation the sum of hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars to fund the firefighters' union contract, effective July one, two thousand and seventeen, with said funds to be distributed to various salary line items by the town accountant.
Motion made and seconded. Now, I know Finance Committee voted on this, and?
Finance committee recommends approval. Unanimous for the next six articles, five through eleven.
Great. Discussion on Article Five. Yes?
Kathleen Lynch, seventy-three Lakewood Drive. I have a question. I'm not against this union contract, but I thought when we reorganized our town, that all contract figures had to be given, and all figures had to be in the Finance Committee report. That is what I remember when I was on the Finance Committee. It was part of the town bylaws.
Town council.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. This issue was brought up earlier in the warrant preparation process, and because collective bargaining is governed by the provisions of Mass. General Laws, Chapter one fifty E, and there is a very stringent, slim time period within which town meetings have to be called and appropriations approved after our contracts are negotiated, I did render an opinion that with respect to collective bargaining agreements, the town could put a, in effect, placeholder warrant article in there, not without specifying the amount of money, because it hasn't been negotiated yet, in order to avoid the need to call a special town meeting strictly to appropriate those funds. So I do believe because of the statutory scheme that governs these negotiations, this is an acceptable format.
Okay, but do we have something in our town bylaws that say otherwise?
There is a bylaw that indicates that all articles seeking to appropriate funds should specify the funds that are to be appropriated, and you can't exceed that amount. As I noted earlier, I believe that the priority of the general law that governs collective bargaining agreements would preclude or supersede that particular bylaw provision in this instance.
Okay.
All right. Any other discussion? All right. All those in favor of Article Five has moved, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? unanimous. Article Six, see if the town will vote to appropriate and transfer from revenue available for appropriation a sum of money to fund the sergeant's contract, effective July one, two thousand and seventeen, with said funds to be distributed to various salary line items by the town accountant, or take any other action related there too. Mr. Gottlieb.
Moderator, I move the town vote to appropriate and transfer from revenue available for appropriation, a sum of twenty-six thousand and seventeen dollars to fund the sergeant's contract, effective July one, two thousand and seventeen, with said funds to be distributed to various salary line items by the town accountant.
Have a second.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Finance Committee already told you they voted six to zero in favor. Discussions on Article Six? I'm assuming it's the same opinion by town council? It is. Okay. Any discussion on Article Six? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article Six has moved, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? unanimous. Article Seven, see if the town will vote to appropriate and transfer from revenue available for appropriation, a sum of money to fund the patrol officers and detectives contract, effective July one, two thousand and seventeen, with said funds to be distributed to various salary line items by the town accountant, or take any other action related there too. Mr. Cahalan.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to appropriate and transfer from the revenue available for appropriation, the sum of one hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars to fund the patrol officers and detectives contract, effective July first, two thousand and seventeen, and said funds to be distributed to various salary line items by the town accountant.
Motion made and seconded. Finance Committee already told you they voted at the town meeting, six to nothing in favor. Discussion on Article Seven? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article Seven has moved, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? unanimous. Article Eight, see if the town will vote to appropriate and transfer from revenue available for appropriation, a sum of money to fund the administrators' contracts, units A, B, and C, effective July one, two thousand and seventeen, with said funds to be distributed to various salary line items by the town accountant, or take any other action related there too. Mr. O'Hara.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to appropriate and transfer from revenue available for appropriation, the sum of sixty-four thousand, to fund the administrative contract, units A and B, effective July one, two thousand and seventeen, with said funds to be distributed to various salary line items by town accountants.
Motion made and seconded. Finance Committee approves this article.
Yeah, that's a question. Look at the, how?
Well, the motion was A and B. C out?
That is correct.
C is out. Lagging behind. Any further discussion on Article Eight? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article Eight has moved, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? unanimous. Article Nine, see if the town will vote to appropriate and transfer from revenue available for appropriation, a sum of money to fund the clerical unit contract, effective July one, two thousand and seventeen, with said funds to be distributed to various salary line items by the town accountant, or take any other action related there too. Ms. Sherman.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to appropriate and transfer from revenue available for appropriation, the sum of fifty-four thousand dollars, to fund the clerical unit contract, effective July first, two thousand and seventeen, with said funds to be distributed to various salary line items by the town accountant.
Motion made and seconded. Finance Committee has approved, six to zero. Any discussion on Article Nine? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article Nine has moved, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? unanimous. Article Ten, see if the town will vote to appropriate and transfer from revenue available for appropriation, a sum of money to fund the public works union, unit contract, effective July one, two thousand and seventeen, with said funds to be distributed to various salary line items by the town accountant, or take any other action related there too. Mr. Gottlieb.
Moderator, I move the town vote to appropriate and transfer from revenue available for appropriation, sum of eighty-four thousand dollars, to fund the public works contract, units A and B, effective July one, two thousand and seventeen, with said funds to be distributed to various salary line items by the town accountant.
Motion made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Finance Committee approves this, six to nothing. Any discussion on Article Ten? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article Ten has moved, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? unanimous. Article Eleven, see if the town will vote to appropriate and transfer from revenue available for appropriation, a sum of money to fund the personnel administration plan, PAP, Appendix B and Appendix C employees, including the plumbing and wiring inspectors, effective July one, two thousand and seventeen, with said funds to be distributed to various salary line items by the town accountant, or take any other action related there too. Mr. Cahalan.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to appropriate and transfer from the revenue available for appropriation, the sum of sixty-six thousand, three hundred and fifty, to fund the personal administration plan, Appendix B, Appendix C, employees including plumbing and wiring inspectors, and the personal services contract for the deputy fire chief, effective July one, two thousand and seventeen, with said funds to be distributed to various salary line items by the town accountant.
Motion made and seconded. Finance Committee has voted six to nothing in favor. Discussion on Article Eleven? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article Eleven has moved, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? unanimous. Article Twelve, see if the town will vote to appropriate and transfer the sum of fifty thousand from revenue available for appropriation to the other post-employment benefits irrevocable trust fund, or take any other action related there too. Mr. O'Hara.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to appropriate and transfer the sum of fifty thousand dollars from the revenue available for appropriation to the other post-employment benefits irrevocable trust fund.
Motion made and seconded. Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends approval.
Any discussion on Article Twelve? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article Twelve has moved, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? unanimous. Article Thirteen, see if the town will vote to establish a capital stabilization fund in accordance with the provisions of General Laws, Chapter forty, Section five B, for purposes of funding town capital expenses, including debt service and other related costs, and to appropriate and transfer the sum of five hundred thousand dollars from revenue available for appropriation to be deposited into said fund, or take any other action related there too. Ms. Sherman.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to establish a capital stabilization fund in accordance with the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter forty, Section five B, for the purpose of funding town capital expenses, including debt service and other related costs, and to appropriate and transfer the sum of five hundred thousand dollars from revenue available for appropriation to be deposited in the said fund.
Motion made and seconded. Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends approval.
All right. Discussion on Article Thirteen? Seeing none. I need a two-thirds vote. All those in favor of Article Thirteen has moved, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? unanimous. Article Fourteen, see if the town will vote to appropriate the sum of one million, five hundred thousand, of paid costs associated with the various building and road improvements identified below, and to determine whether this amount should be raised by taxation, by transfer of available funds, by borrowing or otherwise. Any premium received by the town upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, lest any such premium apply to the payment of the cost of issuance of such bonds or notes, may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote in accordance with Chapter forty-four, Section twenty of the General Laws, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs by a like amount, or take any other action related there too. Mr. Gottlieb.
Moderator, I move the sum of one million, five hundred thousand dollars, B, and hereby is appropriated to pay the cost of road repairs, equipment, and improvements to town and school buildings, and for the payment of all other costs incidental and related there too, and to meet this appropriation, the treasurer, for the approval of the board's selectmen is authorized to borrow one million, five hundred thousand dollars under Chapter forty-four of the General Laws, or any other enabling authority, and the board's selectmen is authorized to take any other action necessary and convenient to carry out the project. Any premium received by the town upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, lest any such premium apply to the payments of the cost of issuance of such bonds or notes, may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote in accordance with Chapter forty-four, Section twenty of the General Laws, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs by a like amount.
Motion made and seconded. Finance Committee.
Finance Committee does recommend approval.
Hey, discussion on Article Fourteen? Yes, ma'am.
Sharon D. Francesco, Situate Road. I wonder if one of the members could please just clarify the article. It's almost as, it's written almost as though one vote is tending to two concerns. One, to see if the town will vote to appropriate the sum, and then to determine whether this amount should be raised by any number of methods. I don't understand the wording.
The project's going to be, the motion calls for the project to be, for the funds to be raised through a borrowing. So the town would, the town would borrow a million and a half dollars to pay for these various projects.
Solely borrowing?
Solely borrowing.
One hundred percent borrowing.
So why are the others mentioned?
They were options when the articles were being drafted, and as we refined the plan, it came down to the borrowing was what we had room for within our budget.
Thank you.
And there's also a possibility of reimbursement on some.
Any other discussion on Article Fourteen? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article Fourteen, I need a two-thirds vote. Say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Approved, two-thirds. Article Fifteen, see if the town will vote to appropriate, borrow, transfer from available funds, a sum of money to be expended under the direction of the Planning and Construction Committee for replacement of roofs, soffits, windows, and doors at the Quashen School, one fifty Old Barnsfield Road, Mashpee, Mass., oh two, six, four, nine, including the payment of costs incidental or related there too, for which the town may be eligible for a school construction grant from the Massachusetts School Building Authority, MSBA. Proposed repair project would materially extend the useful life of the school and preserve an asset that otherwise is capable of supporting the required educational program. The MSBA's grant program is a non-entitlement discretionary program based on need, as determined by the MSBA, and any project cost the town encourages in excess of any grant approved by and received from the MSBA shall be the sole responsibility of the town. Any grant the town of Mashpee may receive from the MSBA for the project shall not exceed the lesser of one, thirty-seven and ninety-five hundredths percent of eligible approved project costs as determined by the MSBA, or two, the total maximum grant amount determined by the MSBA. Mr. Cahalan.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town of Mashpee vote to appropriate the sum of ten million, four hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars, seventy-seven thousand, eight hundred and eighty-four dollars, for the replacement of the roof, soffits, windows, and doors at the Quashen School at one fifty Old Barnsfield Road, Mashpee, Mass. Including the payment of costs incidental and related there too to the proposed repair project, would it materially extend the useless life of the school and preserve and assert the otherwise is a capsule of supporting the required educational project, known as the project, said sum to be expended under the direction of the Planning and Construction Committee, and to meet said appropriation. Committee, and to meet said appropriation, $500,000 is transferred from the renewed, renewed available, revenue available in the treasurer, with the approval of the selectmen is authorized to borrow the sum of $9,700,800.
Nine million nine hundred seventy-seven.
Nine million nine hundred ninety-seven under. Mass. General Law is Chapter Forty-four, and any other enabling authority that the town of Mashpee acknowledge that the Massachusetts School Building Authority grant program is non-entitlement discretionary program, discretionary program based on need as determined by the MSBA, and any project cost, the town of Mashpee incurs in excess of any grant approved by and received by the MSBA shall be the sole responsibility of town of Mashpee, provided further that the grant that the town of Mashpee may receive from the MSBA for the project shall not exceed the lesser of thirty-seven and ninety-five hundredths percent of eligible approved project costs and determined by MSBA, and two, the total maximum grant amount determined by MSBA, provided any appropriation herein under shall be subject to the contingency upon the affirmative vote of the town to exempt the amounts required for the payment of interest and principal on said borrowing from the limitations on taxes imposed by MGL 59, Section Twenty-one C, Proposition Two and a Half, and that the amount of borrowing authorized pursuant to this vote shall be reduced by any amounts received or expected to be received by the MSBA. Prior to the issuance of any bonds or notes under this vote as set forth in the project funding agreement that may be executed between the town of Mashpee and the MSBA, any premium received by the town upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by the vote, by this vote, lest any such premium apply to payment of cost of insurance or such bonds or notes may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote in accordance with Chapter Forty-four, Section Twenty of the General Laws, thereby reducing the amount of authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs by the like amount.
All right. So just so we're clear, the amount authorized to borrow the sum of $9,977,884. Motion been made and seconded. Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends approval.
Discussion on Article Fifteen? Yes, sir.
Dennis Balsarelli, 176, Will. Now, you said there's maybe extra cost. I know there's gonna be mold there, and what about asbestos? Is that figured in this? Unless, when we open this up, you're gonna say, oh, we have mold, we have to get rid of our asbestos. Is that figured in that price, or is that something we're hoping don't happen? And another question.
All right, stay with one.
Okay.
Mr. Collins.
I know the DPW director is in the audience with some folks that are involved directly with the project, and I would like to defer to them.
Okay. Who's gonna take it? DPW. Know about mold and any unexpected problems?
I will answer briefly, and then I'm gonna defer to our design team that's here. Yes, any anticipated, any anticipated mold or asbestos costs are included in the budget. We have done testing and have not found any hazardous materials, but there is some funds in the budget that does anticipate removal that may be associated with it. Jeff, do you wanna add anything?
Well, that answered my question, if you're already.
Okay.
My other question is, are we gonna set up some type of maintenance program so after we spend all this money, every couple of years, we have a guy or somebody go around and say, hey, we gotta take care of this, take care of this, instead of wait another twenty years to say, oh, we need another fifteen million dollars, and they'll do the same thing? It never seems like we have maintenance programs to go along with the money that we're gonna spend on this school. I was hoping that they did set up some type of maintenance program to go along with all the work we're just gonna be doing.
All right. So, does town meeting allow for an outsider, a consultant, to speak? All in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Hi, my name is Jeff Yost, the Architect of Raymond Design Associates. Sorry, can you hear me now? My apologies. With that, I just, I spoke to Catherine here earlier, and I just complimented her on how well the schools are maintained right now compared to other schools we've been involved in. I think they do an exceptional job of maintaining the schools. With the program that we are doing here is, is that we do have a full warranty on the roof for thirty years in this design. The windows are ten-year warranty with finishes up to twenty years, so there is a good.
Kind of plan to do it. Okay, thank you.
All right. Any other discussion on Article Fifteen? Yes, sir.
Just a quick question, if you're doing.
Name and address.
Oh, Peter Road, 197 Old Barnsville Road. If you're doing the roof anyway, would solar be appropriate?
We'll go to the architect. Good question.
The question came up on whether solar was appropriate during the design phase there, and it was evaluated by our structural engineer that wouldn't be capable of it. It's the uplift, it's not the actual weight, and that the solar panels would be more of a sail, and there'd be a full analysis and additional work structurally for that to occur beyond what the cost, and the state wouldn't reimburse, reimburse any of that.
Okay. All other questions?
There are new lightweight solar technologies coming out, which are thin film, which wouldn't have the uplift.
Okay. I'm assuming you looked at all the solar panels, but go ahead.
Yes, we did. There are panels that are of a thin, but they still constitute some type of adherence to the structure, which do still create a sense of a sail and uplift on that. That's what we looked at, and we actually did generate to the committee additional cost to evaluate that, and they said it wasn't the direction that they were looking at.
Okay. Yes, sir.
Hi, Abraham Brody, Ten Michelle Lane. I was wondering, have you considered off-roof solar panels? Is there room for that?
Okay.
We have not at that particular site. That is a conversation that can, the board of selectmen and town manager can have. It would not be part of this project.
Okay. All right. Time to vote on Article Fifteen. Needs a two-thirds vote. All those in favor of Article Fifteen has moved, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes, two-thirds. Article Sixteen. See if the town will vote to create one new full-time position, Assistant Town Planner, within the planning department, with said position to be classified under Unit A of the Managers, Laborers, International Union of North America to be effective July 1, 2017, and to appropriate and transfer the sum of $25,365 from revenue available for appropriation, with said funds to be distributed as follows: $25,000 to the Planning Department Salary Wage Account, and $365 to the Medicare Account, or take any other action related there, too. Mr. O'Hara.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to create one new full-time position, Assistant Town Planner, within the planning department, with said position to be classified under Unit A of the Managers, Laborers, International Union of North America, to be effective July 1, 2017, and to appropriate and transfer the sum of $25,365 from the revenue available for appropriation, with said funds to be distributed as follows: $25,000 to the Planning Department Salary Wage Account, and $365 to the Medicare Account.
Motion made and seconded. Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends approval.
Any discussion on Article Sixteen? Yes, sir.
Abraham Brody again. I want to draw you to page twelve of the report of the Finance Committee. Item number thirty-six. I'm wondering why the Finance Committee recommends, and town manager recommend, less than what the department is requesting, which is already more than what they're getting for this year. So you're on page twelve of the omnibus budget? Yes, I am. Item number thirty-six. If you're gonna be asking for money for this position, how's that gonna be incorporated, the new lower Finance Committee recommended budget?
Sure.
Mr. Moderator.
Yes, Mr. Collins.
Thank you, sir. As I was trying to explain earlier, essentially, the assistant planner, which had been previously funded years ago, was reassigned to GIS approximately 2008 or 2009, but don't quote me. And as a result, the assistant planner was funded, however, the position needed to be recreated, if that makes sense. So what we did was, we recreated the position, the funding was there, but the reason why you're seeing the reduction is because even though you're creating and authorizing the town to have a full-time assistant planner, my intention, and I'm announcing it to the world, is to say it's gonna be part-time, and I hope that that's our current full-time planner. Thank you.
One other question. Is there a potential that could eventually become a full-time assistant planner?
I've learned, never say never.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Sharon D. Francesco, Situate Road. So perhaps someone on the FinCom could just give me a redo on, this article seeks to authorize the creation of a full-time assistant town planner, but appropriates funding as a part-time. I understand the manager just basically did answer that, but I think that the concern remains, A, what it says here before us. I'm surprised at how much is being read out today that's not in the warrant, at any rate. I think that's a concern. You're authorizing a full-time assistant planner, you're only funding them as a part-time, you're telling us he's gonna go in as a part-time. So can we expect to see a request to meet a full-time position?
Again, I would never say never, but that is not the intent. This would authorize a full-time position, but that is the position that we once had, as the current planner has reminded me on many occasions. Unfortunately, we had a little bit of a hiccup several years ago when the assistant planner was transferred to GIS, thereby creating that position in another department. It was transferred from a department to, or I should say, from the planning department to another department, to IT. So this is reestablishing that position.
Why can't it just say, creation of a part-time assistant town planner?
Initially, the planner requested this language. I had no objections with it, and I think he's here. He was here.
Tom, is he here? There he is. So any particular reason why you chose this language over assistant?
I didn't, I didn't choose any of this language. I had nothing to do with this article. We need a full-time assistant planner like we had for thirty years, full-time town planner and a secretary. That's what I put in the budget, and that's what the town needs. What the town manager and voters do is up to them. I'm retiring. Bye.
So I think you heard very clearly, he wants a full-time assistant planner. So.
So we do need a full-time.
Hold on, hold on, hold on.
Try and answer your question.
Oh.
If funded at a part-time level, this passes, if there were ever an intention to make it a full-time position, you'd see it back reflected in the planning department annual budget line item, which you would get a chance to vote on separately.
I expect it. Thank you so much.
Okay. Any other questions?
I have a question. My name is Jill Allen, 432 Catoot Road, and reading this, I was still confused, and I'm still confused. Tom's leaving, he's gone for a while without an assistant and without a secretary. Now he's leaving, he wants a full-time planner, a full-time assistant planner. Is he gonna put on a secretary, too?
Mr. Collins.
He did request a full-time administrative assistant. We funded a part-time, and he requested a full-time assistant planner. We funded it part-time, even though your warrant article is authorizing full-time. It's difficult in this position when you start getting into personnel, but in order to properly fund the collective bargaining agreements that are before you tonight and have already been passed, some difficult decisions had to be made, and it's difficult to add personnel when we're not funding personnel in other departments. That's the bottom line.
Any other questions?
No, but I think I'm still confused about it.
That's all right. Tom's been saying he's gonna retire, but he probably won't.
Hi, David Whedon, 53 Main Street, Mashpee, Massachusetts. I just wanna say, make a statement, not so much a question, that Tom's done a fabulous job. His department is understaffed, in the planning board's opinion, and it was a concern that was mentioned at the meeting, planning board meeting, that, looking down the road, that when he retires, how are we going to get somebody that can do the job as efficiently as he is? He spent so much time in the position that he's able to do a lot. He knows the laws, bylaws, frontwards and backwards, and it is a concern of the planning board that, you know, how is he gonna be replaced with someone that can do everything that he's been doing? So that has been a concern. In conversation with Tom, he's mentioned to me, I also sit on the Cape Cod Commission. The town hasn't adopted a comprehensive town plan like some of the other towns because of the lack of staffing, it sounds like. So I just wanted to mention that in the future, near and distant future, we really need to look at how we support our planning department so that things are done properly. Thank you.
Any other discussion on Article Sixteen? Yes, sir.
It's me again. I'm confused, and I'm hoping I'm not the only one, but I'm easy to confuse. It says part-time, but I hear you saying full-time. Or, I mean, it says $25,365, and that doesn't seem like a full-time salary. So, but I hear from the DIAS, full-time. So where am I, what am I missing here?
Mr. Collins.
What we're doing is, we're creating a full-time position, funding at halftime, with the idea being that it would provide us an opportunity to make a somewhat more orderly transition by getting a part-time assistant planner in the office before Tom retires, so that we can have, not have a, you know, him leaving, and then somebody else coming in new without any support or guidance. So we're creating a full-time position, we're funding it at a halftime level right now, because that's what the administration felt the budget could support at this time.
Which makes perfect sense to have a transition. I just find it a little hard to accept that somebody is going to take a part-time position with the expectation it becomes full-time? Is that what you're saying?
No. The expectation is, we would then fill the full-time planner position upon Tom's retirement. So we'd have an assistant, part-time, and then fill, replace the full-time planner with another full-time planner.
The new person would end up being in Tom's position.
Not necessarily the part-time person.
That would be the part-time person.
We'd see.
You hope.
You have to hire the person.
Gotta hire the person first.
Okay.
That's the goal. All right. All those in favor of Article Sixteen has moved, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
It passes. All right. Article seventeen. See if the town will vote to create one new full-time position, Assistant Tax Collector/Treasurer within the Tax Collector/Treasurer Department. With said position to be classified under the Personnel Administration Plan, PAP, and to appropriate and transfer the sum of nine hundred and fifteen dollars from revenue available for appropriation. With said funds to be distributed as follows: nine hundred and one dollars to the Tax Collector/Treasurer Department for salary wages, and fourteen dollars to the Medicare account. Or take any other action related there, too. Ms. Sherman.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to create one new full-time position, Assistant Tax Collector/Treasurer within the Tax Collector/Treasurer Department. With said positions to be classified under the Personnel Administration Plan, PAP, and to appropriate and transfer the sum of nine hundred and fifteen dollars from revenue available for appropriation. With said funds to be distributed as follows: nine hundred and one dollars to the Tax Collector/Treasurer Department for salary, wage, and fourteen dollars to the Medicare account.
Second.
Motion made in second at Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends approval.
Discussion on Article seventeen. Yes, ma'am.
Sharon D. Francesco, Situate Road. When is, quote, "the Tax Collector/Treasurer absent"? That, that the office manager would have to provide coverage.
I would say on vacation, but, Mr. Collins.
I know the Treasurer's here, so I would defer to him, but in essence, this is not creating a new position. It's essentially in hopes of reclassifying an existing position for the purposes of bonding the position, and I see the Treasurer there, so I'll defer to him.
Yes, sir.
If that's okay, Mr. Moderator.
See town?
You could have kept speaking, I would have been fine with that.
So, hold on. Permission for a non-resident to speak?
I am a resident.
He's a resident. Got some bad information. I'm glad you moved into town. Go ahead.
Craig Mayne, Town Treasurer/Collector. This position, or this request basically makes the assistant, an assistant position for town. If I'm out, win the lottery, get hit by a bus, they have the ability, and it protects the town with respect to bonding questions with, and signatory authority in my absence. That's kind of important.
So your absence is exceptional, it seems?
Except...
I mean, meaning it's, you know...
He would think so.
A, a, a natural disaster. You know, I'm just trying to figure out vacation...
Vacation, I mean, she, she, right now, my office manager has all of the same powers that, well, all of the same abilities that I do, but doesn't have all of the same legal responsibilities. So therefore, such as an MLC, which is a request for municipal lien certificate, has to be signed within ten days. Right now, I'm the only person who can sign it, she can't. Making this position would be able to have her be able to sign that. If I was out for more than ten days, we are in noncompliant with the signatory authority.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions on Article seventeen? Seeing none. All those favor Article seventeen has moved. Say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Unanimous. Article eighteen. See if the town will vote to appropriate the sum of five hundred and forty thousand, six hundred and seven dollars to establish a budget for the PEG Access and Cable Related Fund for fiscal year two thousand and eighteen. With said appropriation to be funded through the current balance of the fund. Or take any other action related there, too. Mr. Collins.
Moderator, I move the town vote to appropriate the sum of five hundred and forty thousand, six hundred and seven dollars to establish a budget for the PEG Access and Cable Related Fund for FY two thousand and eighteen. With said appropriation to be funded through the current balance of the fund. Second.
Motion made in second at Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends approval.
Any discussion on Article eighteen? Seeing none. All those favor of Article eighteen has moved. Say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Unanimous. Article nineteen. See if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, borrow, or transfer from available funds a sum of money to provide for road improvement projects under the Chapter ninety program or take any other action related there, too. Mr. Cahill.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to appropriate six thousand, two...
Six hundred and two...
Six hundred and two thousand, eight hundred and seven dollars to provide for road improvements projects in, for the town in accordance with the provisions of the, provisions of Chapter ninety of Massachusetts General Laws, and to authorize the Treasurer with the approval of the Board of Selectmen to borrow said sum of six hundred and two thousand, eight hundred and seven under and pursuant to the provisions of Mass. General Laws, Chapter forty-four, Section seven and eight, and any other enabling authority to issue bonds and notes to the town thereafter.
Second.
Motion made in second at Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends approval.
Discussion on Article nineteen. Seeing none. I need the two-thirds vote on Article nineteen. All those favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Unanimous. Article twenty. See if the town will vote to appropriate the sum of three hundred and eighty-three thousand, eight eighty-five for the operation of the Kids Club Enterprise Fund for fiscal year two thousand and eighteen. Such sums to be raised from three hundred and eighty-three thousand, eight eighty-five in receipts of the enterprise or any other action, or take any other action related there, too. Mr. O'Hara.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to appropriate the following sums for the operation of the Kids Club Enterprise Fund for FY two thousand and eighteen. Personnel: three hundred and eight thousand, one hundred and twenty-five. Benefits: forty-two thousand, five hundred. Operation expenses: thirty-three thousand, two hundred and sixty.
Second.
Total: three hundred and eighty-three thousand, eight hundred and eighty-five dollars. Such sums to be raised from, from three hundred and eighty-three, eight hundred and fifty-three dollars in receipts of the enterprise.
Okay. Three hundred and eighty-three, eight eighty-five in receipts of the enterprise. Do I have a second? Motion made in second at Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends approval.
Any discussion on Article twenty? Seeing none. All those favor of Article twenty has moved. Say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Unanimous. Article twenty-one. See if the town will vote to appropriate and transfer the sum of forty-nine thousand, five hundred from revenue available for appropriation to the Department of Natural Resources to fund the second year of a monitoring contract with the University of Massachusetts Dartmouth for monitoring water quality associated with shellfish agriculture in Pappanissette Bay and Wacoit Bay, and its effectiveness in reducing water color nutrient concentrations or take any other action related there, too. Ms. Sherman.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to appropriate and transfer the sum of forty-nine thousand, five hundred dollars from revenue available for appropriation to the Department of Natural Resources to fund the second year of monitoring contract with the University of Massachusetts Dartmouth for monitoring water quality associated with shellfish agriculture in Pappanissette Bay and Wacoit Bay, and its effectiveness in reducing water column nutrient concentration.
Second.
Motion made in second at Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends approval.
Any discussion on Article twenty-one? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article twenty-one has moved. Say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Unanimous. Take a motion to dispense with the reading of Article twenty-two? All right. Mr. Collins.
Moderator, I move the town vote to approve Article twenty-two as printed in the warrant.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second at Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends approval.
Any discussion on Article twenty-two? Seeing none. All those favor of Art, Article twenty-two has moved. Say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Unanimous. Article twenty-three. See if the town will vote to establish the limit on expenditures from the Recreation Department revolving account at four hundred and fifty-five thousand, five hundred for fiscal year two thousand and eighteen. Or take any other action related there, too. Mr. Cahill.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to establish the limit of expenditures for the Recreation Department revolving account at four hundred and fifty-five thousand, five hundred for FY two thousand and eighteen.
Second.
Motion made in second at Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends approval.
Any discussion on Article twenty-three? Seeing none. All those favor of Article twenty-three has moved. Say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Unanimous. Article twenty-four. See if the town will vote to establish a limit on expenditures from the Council on Aging revolving account at fifteen thousand dollars for fiscal year two thousand and eighteen. Or take any other action related there, too. Mr. O'Hara.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to establish the limit on expenditures from the Council of Aging revolving account at fifteen thousand dollars for FY two thousand and eighteen.
Second.
Motion made in second at Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends approval.
Any discussion on Article twenty-four? Seeing none. All those favor of Article twenty-four has moved. Say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Unanimous. Article twenty-five. See if the town will vote to establish the limit on expenditures from the Library revolving account at twenty-five thousand dollars for fiscal year two thousand and eighteen. Or take any other action related there, too. Ms. Sherman.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to establish the limit on expenditures for the Library revolving account at twenty-five thousand dollars for FY two thousand and eighteen.
Second.
Motion made in second at Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends approval.
Any discussion on Article twenty-five? Seeing none. All those favor of Article twenty-five, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Unanimous. Article twenty-six. See if the town will vote to establish the limit on expenditures from the Historical Commission slash Archives revolving account at two thousand five hundred for fiscal year two thousand and eighteen, or take any other action related there, too. Mr. Collins.
Moderator, I move the town vote to establish the limit on expenditures from the Historical Commission Archives revolving account at twenty-five hundred dollars for FY two thousand and eighteen. Second.
Motion made in second at Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends approval.
Any discussion on Article twenty-six? Seeing none. All those favor of Article twenty-six has moved. Say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Unanimous. Article twenty-seven. See if the town will vote to appropriate and transfer from the fiscal year two thousand and eighteen Community Preservation Fund estimated revenues, the sum of forty thousand dollars to Community Preservation Committee Administrative and Operating Expense Account pursuant to the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter forty-four B, Section five, including any necessary costs related there, too, as recommended by the Community Preservation Committee or take any other action related there, too. Mr. Cahill.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to appropriate and transfer from the FY two thousand and eighteen Community Preservation Fund estimated revenues, the sum of forty thousand dollars to the Community Preservation Committee Administrative and Operating Expense Account.
Second.
Motion made in second at Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends approval.
Any discussion on Article twenty-seven? Seeing none. All those favor of Article twenty-seven has moved. Say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Unanimous. Article twenty-eight. See if the town will vote to continue participation in the Community Septic Management Program in the Massachusetts Clean Water Trust, MCWT, for the purpose of making loans to residents of the town for repairing and/or upgrading residential septic systems pursuant to agreements between the Board of Health and residential property owners, including all costs incidental and related there, too, or take any other action related there, too. Mr. O'Hara.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to continue participation in the Community Septic Management Program and the Massachusetts Clean Water Trust for the purpose of making loans to residents of the town for repairing and/or upgrading residential septic systems pursuant to agreements between the Board of Health and the residential property owners, including all costs incidental and related there, too.
Do I have a second? Yeah. Motion made in second. Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends approval.
Any discussion on Article twenty-eight? Seeing none. All those favor of Article twenty-eight, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Unanimous. Article twenty-nine. See if the town will vote, vote pursuant to General Law, Chapter forty, Section fifteen A, and Mashpee General Law's bylaw, Mashpee General Bylaw, Section three dash twenty-one, to authorize the Board of Selectmen to transfer title, care, management, custody, and/or control of real property identified at two oh nine Old Barnstable Road, Mashpee Assessors Map sixty, parcel two dash oh, to the Mashpee Affordable Housing Trust for purposes of developing affordable housing, and to authorize the Board of Selectmen to prepare and execute such agreements, deeds, and other instruments necessary to effect such transfer upon such terms and conditions as the Selectmen shall deem to be in the interest of the town, or take any other action related there, too. Ms. Sherman.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote pursuant to General Law, Section forty, Section one five A, and Mashpee General Bylaw, Section three dash twenty-one, to authorize the Board of Selectmen to transfer title, care, management, custody, and/or control of real property identified as two oh nine Old Barnstable Road, Mashpee Assessors Map sixty, parcel, parcel two dash zero, to the Mashpee Affordable Housing Trust for purposes of developing affordable housing, and to authorize the Board of Selectmen to prepare and execute such agreements, deeds, and other instruments necessary to effect such transfer upon such terms and conditions as the Selectmen deem to be in the interest of the town.
Second.
Motion made in second at Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends approval.
Okay. Yes, sir.
First of all, this is my first town meeting, and it's wonderful. I've never seen a hundred and sixty-seven people be more agreeable. I hope the streak breaks here. I find it hard to understand why you would put affordable housing roughly two miles from public transportation. And bear in mind that you cannot walk through Quashnet School or the Cone School, so you have to walk a big circle to get to Mashpee Commons and public transportation. I also find it hard to understand why you would put a density of what is roughly, I believe it's twenty-four units, so the density would be roughly four people per tenth of an acre. I also find it hard to understand why you would essentially raise the population of that stretch of Old Barnstable Road by an order of magnitude.
Okay.
I'm not sure who's supposed to answer these questions, but...
Well, let's see if anybody's from the Housing Authority here.
I see Bud.
Anybody want to take that?
Yeah. It's Walter Abbott, ninety Pine Hill. I'm chairman of the Affordable Housing Committee. You know, we've spent, like, you haven't been here, maybe eight years now investigating where we could put these pieces of parcel. There's not a lot of land available in town that we can actually develop. For, it's just over three acres in that parcel of land. It's a beautiful piece of land there that could put some, some very nice apartments on. And what we're looking for is workforce housing. I don't know how many people in town have come up and said, you know, I have family here, and they're getting out of school, and they'd like to continue to work and live here in Mashpee, but they can't afford, you know, a fifteen hundred dollar a month rental for an apartment. They need something cheaper than that. So what we're trying to develop is some apartments. The numbers aren't bad. If you look around at other developments in the other communities, they can put a lot more than twenty-four on a, on a three acre parcel. Well, that's not the only limit. I think it would be a very nice, I don't think it's going to create a lot of people walking places. They're still going to have cars, there's still many parked there, still going to drive places. But you're, you're talking about twenty-four people, or maybe forty-eight, depending if there's two of them in there. So you're not talking about adding a lot to the, to the density there. And it's no different than it is in a lot of other towns. So this is the best we've been able to come up with so far, so we'd just like to, there's been a feasibility study done, and it's, it's past that with flying colors. What would have to be done after this is, we'd have to have something designed and laid out and presented to the town people to review what it is, what it's going to look like, and what it's going to be made up like. This just puts the land where we could use it if we wanted to use it.
All right. Hold your next thought for a minute, we'll go over here, and I'll come back.
Have you thought about the traffic impact in Old Barnstable Road, especially right at that corner? Also, the fact that you would be tearing down a stand of trees, and also the fact that it's one of the few bypasses around Mashpee Commons? Speaking of which, we already have a housing development on the south side of Mashpee Commons that is being built, I've noticed, on Job Fishing Road. Is there any idea of how that might be able to be utilized in the same regard?
Okay. Yep. Well, I think you did, you gave an...
Yeah, I'm Abraham Brody, and Michelle Lane. I asked a couple of questions earlier in this session.
I understand. You should do it every time for everybody who's here. Mr. Abbott, I think you already said that there's not a lot of land, but go ahead and try to answer.
Yeah, this is Walter Abbott again. That's true. It's not a lot of land, and there will be some traffic in there. But you can't say that Mashpee Commons is going to take away. When I first started on this, there's a master plan for Mashpee Commons, and it says we'll put ninety-six affordable units in there. Today, we have three, and there aren't too many more coming down the road. So there's not a lot of affordable units being put in over Mashpee Commons. It's not answering our problem. You're going to find the next article coming up is another piece of land, which happened to be my favorite piece of land. It solved one of the problems you were talking about as far as transportation. We'll get to that on over 950 Falmouth Road. It's right on the bus line. So it's perfect. But your problem now with builders wanting to build affordable units, there's, they have to have a certain number to make it feasible to do the job. We ran into a problem with one other development we had done here, that it was nine units. And building the nine units, the cost came in so high to do that that it didn't make it feasible. And they said, we don't want to do a unit, again, unless we get thirty units. So they're really looking at thirty units. So twenty-four is close to thirty. But if we combine the two units, two lots, and some builder comes in and will do the other lot and this lot together, they'll get a lot more than the thirty or fifty units that they want. One builder I know came to me, he said, I want fifty, or I don't even want to bother with you. So you have to have a certain number of units in order to even get it built.
Five years ago, any builder would have been happy to build an outhouse, just to keep busy. So I don't know, I don't know how much that argument weighs in on this. And I also understand it's forty or fifty units on Falmouth Road that you're talking about.
I'll tell you what. Join the Affordable Housing Committee and sit down and see.
I'll be happy to.
What some of this is.
I will be absolutely happy to. But what you're saying is you want people to drive all the way around just to go to Mashpee Commons. Now, it makes perfect sense on Falmouth Road where there's public transportation, and they can walk to Mashpee Commons or wherever else they're working. To put this in a residential neighborhood where the average lot size is a third of an acre to half an acre, and to all of a sudden put a density that is roughly one person per, you know, tenth of an acre, it doesn't make sense. Now, in the warrant, it says something about a choice is to put it into conservation land. Why not just stay this question, see what kind of bids you get on the Falmouth Road property, and then I'll be happy to work with you on the Affordable Housing Committee?
We're reading tomorrow night at the town hall at 6:30. Come by.
I will be there. And I'm just hoping we can stay this question until the future.
All right. I'm going to move the question. It's a two-thirds vote. All those in favor of Article 29 is moved, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
I declare it's a two-thirds vote.
I had a question. Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Larry Gentelucci, 203 Old Barnstable Road. And I just wanted to say that the traffic on that street is horrendous, and it is one of the most dangerous streets I've ever driven on with that hairpin turn up by the clubhouse, or the Quashnet Valley Clubhouse. There's a lot of traffic on the street. This is only going to add to it, and it's going to become a horrendous problem. You're probably going to get somebody killed over there. That's all I want to say.
Okay. Article 30. See if the town will vote pursuant to General Law Chapter 40, Section 15A, and the Mashpee General Bylaws 3, Section 3-21, to authorize the board of selectmen to transfer title, care, management, custody, and/or control of the real property identified as 950 Falmouth Road, Mashpee Assessors Map 93, Parcel 6-0, and 7-0, and Map 94, Parcel 7-0, to the Mashpee Affordable Housing Trust for purposes of developing affordable housing and to authorize the board of selectmen to prepare and execute such agreements, deeds, and other instruments necessary to effect such transfer upon such terms and conditions as the selectmen shall be, shall deem to be in the interest of the town or take any other action related there to. Mr. Gottlieb.
Moderator, I move the town vote pursuant to General Law Chapter 40, Section 15A, and Mashpee General Bylaw, Section 3-21, to authorize the board of selectmen to transfer title, care, management, custody, and/or control of the real property identified as 950 Falmouth Road, Mashpee Assessors Map 93, Parcel 6-0, 7-0, and Map 94, Parcel 7-0, Mashpee Affordable Housing Trust for the purpose of developing affordable housing and to authorize the board of selectmen to prepare and execute such agreements, deeds, and other instruments necessary to effect such transfer upon such terms and conditions as the selectmen shall deem to be in the interest of the town.
Second. Motion made in second at Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends approval.
Any discussion on Article 30? All right. Seeing none. I need a two-thirds vote. All those favor of Article 30, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? unanimous. Article 31. See if the town will vote to authorize the board of selectmen to accept the deed in lieu of tax foreclosure pursuant to General Law Chapter 60, Section 77C, conveying fee title to the parcel of real estate owned by the Lakewood Homeowners Association, Inc., shown on the Mashpee Assessors Map 28 as Parcel 36-0, and further identified as 50 Lakewood Drive. As more particularly described in the Barnstable Registry of Deeds Book 5252, page 289, said land to be conveyed to the town free and clear of any liens or encumbrances except for municipal tax liens securing payments of outstanding real estate taxes, and upon conveyance to the town to be held for general municipal purposes. Furthermore, to authorize the board of selectmen undertake any act or to execute any documents necessary to consummate this transaction according to the provisions of General Law Chapter 60, Section 77C, or take any other action related there to. Mr. Kay Allen.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to accept the deed in lieu of tax foreclosure pursuant to General Law's C6B 77C, conveying fee title to the parcel of real estate owned by Lakewood Homeowners Association, Inc., shown on Mashpee Assessors Map 28 as Parcel 36-0, and further identified as 50 Lakewood Drive, as more particularly described in the Barnstable Registry of Deeds Book 5252, page 289, said land to be conveyed to the town free and clear of any liens, encumbrances, except for municipal tax liens securing payment of outstanding real estate taxes, and upon conveyance to the town to be held for general municipal purposes. Further, to authorize the board of selectmen to undertake any act to execute any document necessary to consummate this transaction in accordance with the provisions of General Law's C60, Section 77C.
Second. Motion made in second. Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends approval.
Any discussion on Article 31? Seeing none. I need a two-thirds vote on Article 31. All those favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? unanimous. Article 32. See if the town will vote to adopt Massachusetts General Law Chapter 64L, Section 2A, the local option meals excise or take any other action related there to. Mr. O'Hara.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to adopt Massachusetts General Law's Chapter 64L, Section 2A, the local option meals excise.
Second. Motion made in second. Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends approval.
Discussions on Article 32. Yes, sir.
Christopher Nelson, 30 Palmer Road. Is there any allocation in particular? Is this youth programs, or is this just the general town fund operating budget, so to speak?
General operating.
General operating. Okay. Yes, ma'am.
Sharon Di Francesco, Situate Road. What was the genesis of this? Was this to take advantage, further advantage of tourists?
Jerry, I can answer.
Or, it just seems like another reach into pockets here.
Mr. Kay Allen.
When this law was, became available to the towns, the town of Mashpee decided not to enact it because of our local businesses. We were afraid that they would be taxing people for something that other towns wouldn't have. Since then, every surrounding town has this tax, and we've decided that it wouldn't affect their business at all.
So is it safe to say it's generally passed on to the consumer?
Yeah, it's point zero seven five of one percent to the consumer, which, one of the reasons...
I'm seeing point seven five.
Point zero seven five, excuse me.
Zero point seven five or?
Zero point seven five.
Less than one.
Sorry, I thought you said point zero seven five. My apologies.
Okay.
It's, it's seventy-five cents on a hundred-dollar bill.
Mm-hmm.
And it's money that not only a town of residents have to pay, it's money that tourists coming in, outsiders come in. So it's extra little boost to our treasury, which, as I said, we did not, we did not vote in when it first came in because we did not want to affect or hurt our own restaurant people.
Thank you.
Any other discussion on Article 32? Seeing none. All those favor of Article 32 is moved, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Try it one more time. All those in favor of Article 32, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Passes. Article 33. Move to dispense.
So moved.
All right. Ms. Sherman.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to approve Article 33 as written in the warrant, with the exception of the last sentence in Section 1-8A, which shall be deleted by the bylaw and with the exception of the phrase "or take on any other action related thereto."
Second. Motion made and seconded. Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends approval.
Any discussion on Article 33? This is lunch.
Kathleen Lynch, Lakewood Drive. I have a couple of questions on this. The first is regarding the school department. What if the school department doesn't agree to this?
We took that section out. There's no reference to the, the sentence in Ms. Sherman's motion incorporated, removed the reference from the school committee, resolving any concerns they, I believe that they had.
Okay, so they won't consolidate with the school?
No.
Okay, thank you.
And that was never the intent.
Okay. The next question I have is the Director of Municipal Finance. This was a position in the town that was moved over to be the Assistant Town Manager. So now we're going to have the Assistant Town Manager and a Director of Municipal Finance?
Carlos.
Under the flow chart, you're absolutely correct. The Assistant Manager does oversee the financial team. The financial team essentially consists of the Finance Director, or in this case, the accountant, and in addition, the tax collector and the assessor. Prior to my arrival, in my current capacity, the position was already reclassified. Essentially, what this does is streamline our table of organization and gets it in line with what was recommended, I believe, back in the 2008 reorganization. It does not create a new position. It designates the person who is in charge of the financial team that does report to the Assistant Town Manager, but he is doing much more right now than just overseeing the finance team.
So is there any cost to the town in this with this article?
No, there is not, because the current Finance Director is going to continue to be earning what she's currently earning.
Right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other discussion on Article 33?
So could you, Sharon Di Francesco, Situate Road, could you, could you flowchart that a little bit for us? I mean, if they're still going to be doing what they were doing, something's changing.
Mr. Gottlieb.
Make the attempt before we get into the flow check. This should have been done in 2008 when the reorganization was done. This article should have come to town meeting. So what you're being asked to do is effectively bless what's been in place for almost a decade so that our town bylaw matches with the organizational operation that's been in place for almost ten years. So it doesn't change the day-to-day operations. It just lines up. There've been a couple of places you've heard tonight where the Town Manager has recognized that there were changes made that were not reflected in the appropriate changes in the town bylaws as they should have been, and we're cleaning those up tonight.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. All those in favor of Article 33 is moved, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Passes. Article 34. I'll take a motion to dispense with the reading.
So moved.
Mr. Gottlieb.
Moderator, I move the town vote to approve Article 34 as written in the warrant, with the exception of the first sentence in Section 107-4D, but shall be replaced with the following language. The application of phosphorus-containing fertilizers without nitrogen is prohibited within twenty feet, and the application of nitrogen is prohibited within a hundred feet of the following resource areas as defined in the Mashpee Wetlands Protection Bylaw, Section 2 and Regulations. Any freshwater coastal wetlands, marshes, wet meadows, bogs, swamps, fernal pools, lakes, ponds, rivers, streams, creeks, and estuaries.
Motion made in second.
Second.
Motion made in second. Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends approval.
Any discussion on Article 34?
Michael Talbot, 30 Picoade Avenue. I'm also chairman of the town of Mashpee's Environmental Oversight Committee, which submitted its bylaw to the board of selectmen. There's only two changes in the bylaw from the Nitrogen Control Bylaw passed overwhelmingly in 2014. Number one, the bylaw had been enforced mostly by the Board of Health, but both the Conservation Department and Department of Natural Resources have offered to help with enforcement. So we're adding these departments to the enforcement of this bylaw. And second, founder of the Mashpee Environmental Coalition, Lake Ray Day Baker, a lot of us knew him, had always wanted the town to regulate phosphorus and lawn fertilizer because it's a leading cause of algal blooms and other damage to our freshwater ponds and streams. The Commonwealth of Mass became the tenth state to regulate phosphorus and lawn fertilizers, but they had no budget to enforce it. So along with a number of other towns on the Cape, we're simply adding the already existing phosphorus regulations to our Nitrogen Control Bylaw, which is why we now call it the Nutrient Control Bylaw. It reduces both nitrogen and phosphorus pollution damaging our waterways, so I urge you to make these valuable changes.
Any further discussion on Article 34? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article 34 is moved, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? It passes. Article 35. See if the town will vote to authorize and empower the board of selectmen for fair plan laying out and defining Pierre Benier Drive, Cadian Way, and Gunter's Lane. And to accomplish that purpose and for expenses related thereto, the town vote to appropriate and transfer the sum of seven thousand dollars revenue available for appropriation to the Pierre Benier Drive, Cadian Way, and Gunter's Lane Roadways account or take any other action related there to. This is a petition article. Go ahead.
Good evening. Christine Aziz, 36 Gunter's Lane. The motion is, I move the town to move the town vote to authorize and empower the board of selectmen to prepare a plan laying out and defining Pierre Benier Drive, Cation Way, and Gunter's Lane, and to accomplish said purpose. And for expenses related thereto, the town vote to appropriate and transfer the sum of seven thousand dollars from revenue available for appropriation to Pierre Benier, Cation Way, and Gunter's Lane Roadways account.
Second. Motion made in second at Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends approval.
Discussion on Article 35 as petition. Seeing none. All those in favor of Article 35 is moved, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? unanimous. Article 36. I'll take a motion to dispense with this reading.
So moved.
Okay. This is a petition article. Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion.
Yeah? Go ahead.
My name is David Parkner. My name is David Parkner. I'm from 19 M. Oakley Mills Way in Mashpee. I move the town vote to accept the layouts as public ways of M. Oakley Mills Way, as shown on the plans entitled M. Oakley Mills Way Easement Taking Plan in Mashpee, Mass., Barnstable County dated May 9, 2016, and prepared by Baxter &amp; I Engineering and Surveying, which lays out, which layout shall have been filed in the office of the town clerk knowledge in seven days prior to the date of the vote hereunder, and to authorize the Board of Selectmen to acquire by gift, purchase, or eminent domain, taking any land necessary for the purpose of such ways as so laid out, and to appropriate the sum of $63,299 to the M. Oakley Mills Way Roadways account, and to raise such appropriations, the treasurer, with the approval of the Board of Selectmen, be authorized to borrow at one time, from one time to a nut, to a time, under the pursuant of Chapter 44, Section 7, or 8, or any other enabling authority for such purchase or taking and layout, including cost of construction, constructing such ways, and legal financing and other costs incidental or related thereto. And further authorization, the Board of Selectmen, to assess betterments to the owners of the land or butting the ways. Any premium received by the town upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, lest any such premiums apply to the permanent, to the payment, excuse me, of the cost of issuance of such bonds or notes may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote in accordance with Chapter 44, Section 20, of the General Law's, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs by a like amount.
Okay. And that amount, Mr. Parkner, was $63,299. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second. The Planning Board.
At its public meeting on January, on March 15, 2017, the Planning Board voted 4 to 0 to recommend the approval of Article 36.
Okay, thank you. Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends approval.
All right. Any discussion on Article 36? All right. Seeing none. All those in favor of Article 36 as motion, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? unanimous. Take a motion to adjourn.
I'll move.
Thank you very much.